I like to call this July 19th Council Work Session and regular council meeting to order. I just have some very upsetting news and shocking news for the borough residents today that we found out that a great person, one of our business people on Mill Street, Donna from Digger Dogs, died, passed away with a massive heart attack. So it's very upsetting. She was a great person and she's dearly going to be missed in this town, I can tell you that. So let's remember her and her family in our prayers during this moment of silence. Please salute the flag.
(Inaudible)
Mr. Dard.
President.
Mr. Devine. And I have Mr. Pezzin.
Here.
Ms. Collins.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Jordan.
President.
President. another month. So I apologize for not mentioning him also, but let's remember Joe in our prayers too today for a speedy recovery. Councilwoman Rodriguez is away for two weeks. She planned on being here last week, but the storm has prevented us from having a meeting last week, and I guess Councilman Devine is on vacation also. Okay, public participation. So anybody on this side of the room? I know everybody's shocked over this Donna thing. It's just so hard to accept right now. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything at this time? At the podium and state your name.
My name is Cynthia Adams, and I'm here on behalf of the Business Association Number One, trying to get a letter to go to Bristol Township so that we can have the Croydon Fire Police come in. We've been trying to get this letter for a couple of weeks. They've agreed to do it, but that's one of the big pieces of things that we're missing for First Fridays. The other thing is I have a gentleman that's coming tonight from Pappas Pretzels, Cody Beck. I don't know, he's not here yet, but he would like to start a farmer's market, so I'm kind of speaking for him since he's not here. The farmer's market, I think, is going to be very nice. He has reasonably priced vegetables to come in and be up at the beginning of Mill Street there where it was before.
He's got to go into the filing application.
He's having a meet and greet at Naked Brewery on the 28th, and he was going to invite all of you, so if he does come in, I would like him to speak on his own behalf.
So Cynthia, anybody that wants to do anything on Mill Street has to come in, or anywhere in town, has to come in and file an application with the borough, explaining everything they have to do. Sally will review it and either give him permission, or if it's a zoning, whatever. But that's the process of getting started. So whether he came tonight or not, we couldn't approve anything.
No.
He needs to file an application. The other thing you discussed about First Fridays, and matter of fact, let me just back up, we were in executive session about personnel this evening, and that's why we had our executive session, and some of that is fire police. And we don't have fire police, and our fire chief is working on getting fire police. The Borough Council is 150% in favor of First Friday, and that's, I guess, what you're discussing, correct? First Fridays?
Yes.
We want to see any event take place in Bristol. The problem right now is that after COVID and with COVID, and a lot of people don't want to come out, and a lot of people don't want to volunteer for anything, so we're really sure on manpower. And I think that if you want, there was a couple of meetings that Michael attended and Mr. Dillon regarding some of these events, whether it's the Mill Street Run, whether it's the Do-Op, whatever, we need to figure out where we're going to get these volunteers. If it's something you guys want to discuss, I have no problem making myself available to you after the meeting. But if we can meet these criteria or qualifications to get these people out, we have no problem with working with anybody to put this event on. Is August too soon? I mean, it's only in a couple of weeks, I don't know. I would suggest maybe try to get something for September. You know, give us a little bit more time to work through these bumps in the road.
Since I'm going to be on the same thing, can I come up?
Yeah.
We have had a meeting with the borough, with Michael.
Susan, just state your name for the reference.
I'm sorry, Susan Rackland, Bristol Borough Business Association. We've had some meetings already, and we have actually resolved every issue except the fire police. We're ready to go if we get the fire police. We contacted Bristol Township, they said they would do it. All they need is a formal letter from the borough requesting it so that their insurance will cover them.
Okay.
I called our police chief, and I understand he was on vacation last week, so I didn't get an answer from him, and I contacted Mr. Dillon, and didn't get an answer from him. And like you said, it's two and a half weeks away. We have to do it now if we're going to do it. All we need to go forward is the letter.
Michael.
So this letter, I think what needs to be explained, I think that you have the thought that it will come from us, and we're not authorized to do that, correct? Doesn't it have to come from the police?
No.
No, the township said it doesn't matter who, as a courtesy, it should be somebody like a chief or the mayor or something, though.
The borough in the past has asked the township for the fire police, and we were turned down.
I understand, yes.
We were somewhat taken back that all of a sudden they're willing to come in on a First Friday. Now, if I can finish, I'll show your hand. You know, Mr. Monday does the Mill Street Run, all the other organizations provide enough staff and enough help to get us through, okay? So in speaking with Chief Slack today, he feels he can produce three or four fire police that are qualified to assist, but we still need, you know, your help. I mean, we can't run it ourselves, okay? And like I said, as an example, John Monday, he has volunteers, we don't have to do anything.
Right. We have plenty of volunteers, but we were told at the meeting with the borough that they would not accept our volunteers, they wanted fire police. We have, if you allow us to do it with the volunteers, we're ready to go right now.
So Merle, do we know how, what do we need to do? We need people at every intersection? Like, I don't know what we need. So do you have a, did somebody provide you with a list to say you need all these things? Or no?
We have a list of our own of what we need to run it, but as far as the fire police goes, it was the borough that decided how many people to give us last time.
All right, so why don't we do this instead of, Merle, let's meet sometime tomorrow. Michael's around?
I could, well, I'll work it out.
We'll work something out. Let's get a list, whether it's for this event or any event, this is what you need to do to put this event on.
Well, they're not all the same, but with what Kirby's going to supply, and they know that they have to put up the barricades or put up the signs, then they'll have three firefighters in our home.
And what about the cleanup as well?
We have a cleanup crew, yeah.
Okay, I'm just.
Susan, who's going to be, let's just say, First Friday, there's an event.
Right.
And nobody's at Mill Street, and there's no fire police, and there's, who is going to be the contact person that, somebody get on the phone and say, we're going to shut this thing down unless this happens?
Megan McLeer Hemms has just been hired by the Business Association to run the events.
And who's Steve still in charge of that?
Steve is the head, the president of the Business Association. He hired Megan to run the event.
So I think Megan, you, and Steve, we should have a meeting as soon as possible, and like I said, I think council's in favor of the event as long as we can pull this off.
Right.
So you want to do it tomorrow, you want to do it Wednesday?
The sooner the better, because they're saying if we don't, we had issued ourselves a deadline of last Friday. If we didn't get an answer, we would cancel. And then we heard that you were having this meeting tonight, and we could come talk, so we postponed our decision until today, so I don't want to keep putting it off.
Can I ask something?
Go ahead.
Just food for thought, just full disclosure, my wife's a business owner, I'm a member of the BBBA as well. Just a thought out loud, with the trash cleanup, things along those lines, if that doesn't go well this time, that could be a big problem. So I'm just speaking out loud, if you're feeling confident that all of that stuff is going to happen and it's going to go smoothly, then, you know, I would say go for it. If you're not, I'm just wondering what the harm is in waiting one month. That's just literally thinking out loud off the top of my head.
We've had so many meetings, we've thought of all these things. The first thing is, in the past, we've used Mascaro, or I guess Waste Management in the past before that, to pick up the trash. They could not do it this year, so we actually hired a private company, so we've got that all worked out. They were actually picking up the trash that night where Mascaro did it the next morning, so we'll have that all taken care of. We've, the borough has hired a new porta potty company, and we've, they've agreed, we've already spoken to them, that they'll add extras for that event, and we'll take care of that. So yeah, we've, seriously, we've met every couple of days for the past two months, and the question keeps coming up, should we postpone till September? And honestly, some of our members want to do that, but I and a few others feel that we'll lose another whole summer. We lost all last summer. The people are constantly contacting us, both the businesses and customers, when is it going to happen? So I think if you do it in September, we've lost another year.
I understand. I don't want to be a Johnny Come Lately, like, because I know you.
No, no, you weren't there, so you didn't know.
Just food for thought, you know, just as pulling it off with full execution might be worth the end result.
We are short on vendors because we haven't actually said yes yet, and then they're all booking other engagements, because all the other towns around are having their events.
Right.
Michael.
Yeah, I understand that maybe if you could, like you said, the contacts, why don't you have maybe, if it's okay, email it to Mr. Dillon so that more so the council people will have just in case, because if something's not right, they're going to contact the council person. So maybe say, it yourself, it's, you know, whoever, whoever.
Hemms.
Names, contacts.
Mr. Dillon does have that, or?
No, but I think we should, like, do that in a separate one, so we'll have it.
Like have phone numbers and things like that.
Yeah, because before, I know Merle used to give up, used to share the walkie talkies.
I just think that we need a meeting with Steve as the president of the association, saying, for some reason, if this thing goes sideways, and we have to bring borough workers in and cops in or whatever to fill in these gaps, somebody's got to pick up the tab. We're not going to bring people in and start paying them, you know, time and a half.
Right.
There's trash all over the streets. Look, they did Juneteenth.
I'm sorry, what?
Juneteenth, when they, it was the cleanest event they said ever took place in Bristol. We sent guys in the next day just to check trash cans, there were new bags in every can. That's how the event should take place. That's how good of a job they did.
And I think with the trash company we hired this year, that will work for us as well. Steve is out of town today, I don't know when he's coming back.
I just got a text, he'll be back tomorrow, Wednesday.
Be back tomorrow? Okay. So if he's willing to come, yes.
We'll work it out, and just give us a couple of days.
Excuse me, the reason you were taken aback with Bristol Township is Energy Ripple over here, that just opened up, offered to contact the Croydon Fire Police, and that's how we got.
Her brother is a fire police.
But you're, I know you want to date, like, you want to say yes or no. It is a yes, as long as we're providing these services. And you're saying you're going to provide them, so then just keep moving forward.
But we don't want to take money from the vendors until we get the, in writing, okay from the township, and we can't get that unless the borough sends them a letter.
From what I understand, you don't need the township. But you don't need them either. You have the fire police.
Or our fire police.
And then, and then your volunteers.
According to our emergency manager, you have enough with the.
That's the opposite of what we were told at the last meeting.
Okay.
So if you're saying we have fire police and that's all we need, along with our volunteers, then we'll do it.
So no meeting, right?
Be good to go?
I would say we're good to go.
Be good to go. Susan, I just want to, today, Chief Slack said he could provide four.
Four?
It's the first time we've heard that, okay? So that's what's strange.
Okay, is that enough to satisfy the borough?
Yes.
With your volunteers, it should. Merle, say. Yes.
Thank you very much.
If he says yes, council says yes. All right, anybody, anybody else on this side of the room?
Thank you.
Anybody on this side? Okay, that ends public participation. Okay, number three on the agenda.
Items for consideration, or are we doing?
New business, or you want to get into that, or?
No, no, I'm just saying.
All right, let me just go through council real quick. Lorraine, what do you have? A lot?
I'm just concerned about the water event that we had, the rain event, and, you know, I think the people on Harrison Street, as well as on a couple of other streets, were flooded out, and, you know, a couple of the towns, the councilmen were there, the school board people, a couple of those went, and you were there, right? Yeah. So I just, I want to see if we can have a meeting with them, a couple of us, sit down with the people that live on Harrison Street, and discuss, you know, what can be done. And that's the only problem I'm having right now, is that water event that we had.
Well, anytime you want to set up a meeting, Lorraine.
Well, we did discuss it, and we're going ahead with it. Right, correct? Okay. All right.
Sure, go ahead. If I may tag on to that, please. Since the storm last Monday, the borough has been accepting phone calls, not any damages, and we've been forwarding that information to the county, and we have a list of, matter of fact, 50 properties involved. So that's been forwarded to the county, we continue to update that, so we encourage any resident that's not on this list to either email the borough or call us and ask for Lisa, and she'll get you on the list, and we get it to the county. Now, today, Merle and I met with the county, and they had FEMA, which is the Pennsylvania Emergency Management, and tomorrow and Wednesday, between 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM, there's going to be a multi-agency resource center meeting in 1800 Keystone Street, which is the Keystone Elementary School in Bristol Township. And there's going to be a number of state and federal agencies attending, so we're going to put this up on the Facebook page this evening, because we just got this information. So our residents are encouraged to go there if they have any questions. As an example, the Attorney General's Office will be there, and Congressman Fitzpatrick's office will be represented, et cetera, et cetera. So it'll be like a two-day gathering.
Okay.
But again, we encourage our residents to either email or call Lisa and get you on this list, and so we can continue to pass it on to the county emergency management. So I have a copy of that information, I'll give it to you tonight.
Mr. Dillon, I spoke to a few people today, and they just wanted to be assured that Bristol Borough was included in that, because the meeting is in Bristol Township. And that's what you're saying, Bristol Borough is included.
Beck Salem will be there, all Beck Salem residents that have been involved, as well as a section of North Philadelphia, northeast Philadelphia. So it's a more or less like a regional meeting.
Thank you for that information, that's great.
Okay, anything else, Lorraine?
No, thank you.
Greg?
So the governor came to town also, I guess, what day was that? That was Friday.
Friday.
And he was at the Wharf. He was originally scheduled to hold a meeting just to talk about the hospitality industry and the rescue plan there, but I just wanted to make it clear to people that there were two events. There was that event, talking about the hospitality recovery, as well as then Governor Wolf then toward the flood damage. So, you know, he was walking and chewing gum at the same time. I know some people thought that just having that one event was, you know, out of touch, but he was doing both things. But that leads me then to my question for Mr. Dillon. So Pennsylvania was denied the FEMA emergency, correct? Is that right?
I don't think a final determination's been made.
Okay.
Like a 30-day window before that's.
Okay, so that has not been determined?
That's not true, and you need $19 million.
I saw that, 19.1 million.
Worth of damage before they could do something.
Right, and the governor said that he was not happy with that threshold, that that's too high of a threshold for some of the types of damage that people, so, okay, I just wanted to get the information out.
Problem is with this flood, and a lot of people I talk, I went home, my machine couldn't take any more calls, but.
You still have an answering machine?
Yeah.
For business.
I'm just kidding, go ahead.
But anyway, everybody thinks your homeowners covers this. It doesn't cover flood, and even if you're in a non-flood area, like people say, well, my sump pump couldn't take it, well, there's sump pump insurance, but there's maximum coverage on that. You might only have $5,000 or $10,000 worth of coverage. So I'm doing jobs in Croydon, people are calling because they all got flooded on Spencer Avenue, that there's no insurance for this. They just, they're flooded out, and it's a shame, everything they lost, it's on them.
Yep.
But a lot of people don't want to hear it, well, how am I going to afford it? You know, I understand.
Yeah.
But it's a shame right now what's going on, and that's where FEMA would come in and try to give you either a low-interest loan or try to help you in some way.
Yeah, and Harrison Street, McKinley Street, in our ward, we know, you know, we've long dealt with those things, but this was certainly a hundred-year storm, to say the least. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, one second. The reason why I bring up Harrison Street so much is because it has been a flood area for years. Greg even said when his grandfather lived there, so, and that's been many years ago, so that's why I'm bringing that up.
Yep, okay, I agree. So I have a question about, this might be also for Officer Morse here. So, sorry, Sergeant Morse. Route 13, right? The project, I still think, was a good project. The setup of it, I think, is better than it was. However, the pedestrian traffic on Route 13, what, are there rules about who can walk along the side of a highway like that? And if there are, who would enforce it? I know that there was a tragic accident the other night, and honestly, before that even happened, I see the people, and I feel for these people, there's obviously a large contingency of people who are down on their luck that are making that walk. Some of them appear to not be, you know, so coherent at times as well, it just, it seems so dangerous, and, you know, you add the state of the people that are making the walk, and obviously, that's a whole nother conversation about what we can do to help people in that situation. But what about the, what is the enforcement mechanism, if anything, about who walks along Route 13?
Well, the sidewalks are set up. We should be using them.
Right, not talking about the sidewalks.
And most people are.
Yeah.
All the intersections have the access controls to guide you, when to cross and when not to cross.
Right, right.
The accident the other day was an unfortunate accident, it was still under investigation.
Right.
But we are seeing an up, very large uptick of people that are, that aren't using the intersections with the controls, and they're just walking across, and they might not be in the best state of mind to make that cross without no assistance from the lights.
Right, so like, from Burger King to Wawa on the, I guess it's the east side, you know.
Nobody should be walking along there.
Right, so, I mean, I know Route 13 is in the borough, but that's a state road, right?
Yes, it's Penn 9.
So I'm just wondering if there is any way that we can kind of coordinate with the state to let them know that this is a really particularly bad spot. I just think, you know, I just really think it's a tragedy waiting to happen, another tragedy waiting to happen. I know that we know that there is, you know, a reason why there's a certain number of people where they are, and that's something that, you know, we should consider as well and look at with the state and the county about resources for people that are either addicts or homeless or whatever it might be. But it just seems like that thoroughfare right there is like, it's just a disaster waiting to happen, and I don't know if there's any communication we can have with the state police on that.
What a lot of the problem is, Greg, is that you have the facilities right across Bath Road on the campus of Lower Bucks.
Yep.
And that's what's drawing, everybody's being brought there from all of Bucks County, delivered there. If there's no chance of them getting help, a lot of these people don't have a ride to go back to where they came from, or they're told, well, we'll have some help for you, but it won't be for 24 or 48 hours, so they have nowhere to go.
They're just put out.
So they're, they're put out, and they're, you see them all over the place.
Yeah, you do.
And it's tragic, I mean, we can, we can start to enforce the speed again, but.
No, yeah, no, I mean, I, I think it's more of a pedestrian issue than it, in my opinion, than it appears to be a driver issue, it's just, you know, it's, you just never know what you're going to get in that situation.
It's a big issue that I'm going to meet with the chief about when he comes back, and we have to address it.
Okay, all right, thank you. And if there's any, you know, thing I think you need from us, like maybe contacting the state, or again, I know we've dealt with that facility a number of times, but maybe we should revisit that as well, just to kind of talk about their policies and procedures.
I just think they're overwhelmed, honestly.
Right. Mostly addicts, is that mostly what they're dealing with there?
We're having an issue with the addiction issue and the mental health issue.
Yeah.
I mean, I, just thinking at the beginning of the meeting, I wanted to also mention one of our firemen that was struck and killed, Danny Santiago, a week ago on 13, and didn't get the opportunity with this Digger Dogs thing, just to everybody out of whack, but we should remember him and his family also in our prayers. I mean, it was tragic that this young gentleman got killed on Route 13.
Okay.
So the Santiago family's going through a lot right now also. All right, Greg, is that it?
No, actually, sorry, I do have two more things. Thank you. So let me first, before anyone panics, tell you that these things are like three to five years in the minimum, and I don't want to throw out any pipe dreams that are impossible, but I would like to kind of throw out there on the table. We've talked a lot about recreation in this chamber as of late, and this is the first year that skateboarding is actually going to be an Olympic event. I know the, you know, some of the reputation that skateboarders or skateboard kind of community has had in the past, but I also know it's a great outlet, it's a very diverse sport, you know, and it's not an expensive sport, and Tony Hough, who is of my generation, has a program in place where they will advise and, you know, do a lot of things and help you fundraise to look at a skate park. I have no idea about where I would think something like that should happen, I have no idea whether it's even feasible, but I do think, considering that this is the year that skateboarding has actually been legitimized as much as being an Olympic event, and we want to talk about kinds of recreation programs where kids can kind of just show up and have a release, I would like to look at the possibility of what a skate park. park could look like in the borough. There's one in Middletown that is like state-of-the-art. It's beautiful. I know all the liability concerns and things that would go along with it, but I would just like to put that out there as something to take a look at in the future. That's all I have.
There's not, we weren't talking about something else.
I got you.
But we have drawings on skateboard parks.
Okay.
We must have looked to visit them so many times.
Yep.
The thing was, we brought companies in.
Yeah.
And like you said, state-of-the-art, and then six months to a year, that's not what they're using anymore and they just sit there and nobody uses them.
No, I got you.
But I have no problem looking at it.
Yeah, just something to look at, something to consider.
Matter of fact, we, I know we either have drawings and manufacturers that set them up.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Mr. Giuseppe, can I make, ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to ask Sergeant Morse, what are we doing about the cycles in town? You know, the.
We're doing the best that we can and just so you know, we did apprehend one in front of Grundy Towers the other day and towed it and citations were issued to the person.
So, you towed it, so the person left it there? Is that what you're saying?
No, we actually caught the person driving it.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a very fine line on what we can do with, for liability reasons, how we handle that. We're trying to come up with a game plan on.
What does that mean? How you handle it?
Well, they're not supposed to be on the road.
Okay.
They're not registered, they're not insured. If we engage with them and there's a pursuit and it doesn't end very good, we could, we're very, we more than likely are going to be sued and become liable for chasing them into traffic. And if they're hit by another car, it could be something that comes back to the borough. So, Philadelphia's having a huge problem with it. The suburbs are having a huge problem with it. It's, really have to be lucky and very coordinated to be able to catch them. We've tried in the past and it's very difficult.
Seems to be a big problem.
It's a huge problem. They're coming right up, it's almost every day I'm getting calls, they're coming down Rackliff Street.
They're holding them up, popping wheelies.
Right up Mill Street, the wrong way.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
What I could say, if I could add one thing, is if people are watching and they know that one of their neighbors is involved in this, because there are people from Bristol Borough that are involved with the quads and they're quickly getting back into their homes, they could call anonymously and say, "Look, this, there's a green or blue or white quad or motorcycle that was just racing around the neighborhood at this address."
Okay.
And that would be a big help to us. So, we have an idea of where these cycles are coming from.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yes, thank you. Two things. A couple of months ago, my bus boat was stolen out of my yard. I'd like to issue a public thank you to Waller and his neighbor for having cameras who caught the fellow. Also, Officer Vale, Officer Dragon, Detective Davis and Chief Henry, they made quick work on it and the boat recovered within 48 hours. And my second question is to Sergeant Morse. As you know, Joe, a lot of older heavy-duty work trucks have been stolen in town. The ignition is smashed, the catalytic, taken to a quiet location and the catalytic converters were being stolen out of them. Do we know who's buying these stolen parts is the question?
Right now, we don't, but what I can tell you is that we have assigned Officer Lovitzky to handle this and he's doing a great job.
Right.
We actually made an arrest last week.
At David, uh, from the.
Yes, so we made one arrest and he has been in contact with all the municipalities around us with their jobs and the state police, because that's what we're trying to find out. We're trying to take it to the next level to find out.
Who's buying?
Where these people are taking these catalytic converters to getting the money from them people and then they're the ones that are taking them apart and getting the metals that are in the platinum and stuff.
If we find out who's buying them, tell them stop, you know.
We're trying to get to that level with the investigation and the arrests that have been made, not just here, but in Falls Township and with the state police. We are, we're trying to get to that next level.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have about.
Louie? Michael?
I just wanted to thank once again the Public Works for the fantastic job they did with like getting ready for the governor coming, but all the time what they do. And I would just like to put out like a little message that on Mill Street, if everybody could just be aware of their weeds, you know, go out, do a little each day. Don't wait a week because then they're up. If you could please, just take care of your weeds. Thank you.
Billy, you have anything?
No.
Jim?
Yes, just two things. One, we had on last week's agenda and apparently it slid off because it authorized the sale of a used vehicle. We put it out on municipal bid and the high bid came in at $4,091. It's a 2006 Ford truck at 55,000 miles on it. So, we had numerous bids and the high bid came in at $4,091. I'd like council to make that motion to authorize the acceptance of that bid, please. And the other item is to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance that would amend the state fireman's relief funds. Presently, five fire companies receive that. That should be amended to four. So, request the authorization for a solicitor to prepare the ordinance and advertise, same.
Any questions on either one? Okay. I only have a couple of things. One is talking about recreation. The borough's trying to start a soccer program and bring back the borough recreation soccer program in the town. And we never want to compete with St. Mark's because Father Mooney and CYO do a great job, but the way it's handled right now, only kids that belong in St. Mark's, I think, can play. There's a lot of kids that don't belong to St. Mark's. There's a lot of kids that aren't in the CCD program. So, talking to our committee, which is Lorraine, I think Greg and Betty, decided to engage Mike Plabloski to start a soccer program starting this September. Besides the kickball program that Stacy runs on the Little League field, I think it would be a good thing. And I think Mike has the knowledge and know-how to pull this off in a short period of time. He wants to start registrations right away. And he's also looking into running basketball in December or January. So, I think he's the right guy. He's, knows the kids, he knows all the things that have to be done. And we're working out a pay right now stipend to give him. He's not looking for a lot of money, he didn't even mention money, but we want to do pay as an athletic director for the borough. I talked to Mr. Chicalati at the school board because the main thing is that we're going to need field time. And the borough would use the fields first. It was, you know, no matter who's involved, we would have first rate on all the fields. And then St. Mark's would have second rates on all the fields for their soccer practices and games. So, between their soccer director and Mike, and they live on the same street, I think they could work it out where nobody's going to be affected. So, I just want to make sure that, I don't know if this needs to be voted on tonight. I think it should be an agenda item to say that we want to start the borough soccer program and we hire Mike Plabloski. And the rate, we will discuss the rate next month. I didn't get a chance to meet with him. He wanted to meet before tonight's meeting. Ran out of time. So, if nobody has any problem with that, I'd like to make that an agenda item to move forward, starting our soccer program, which we had years ago. So, I'll bring that back. And that's about it. Other stuff I could wait till next month. It's an early meeting. We'll get out of here. So, items for consideration, instead of going through every one. The only thing I see that's changing is the advertisement for the parking meters. We talked about 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM and it's Monday through Sunday. And no legal holidays and Sundays, we will be giving tickets out.
Yeah.
So, whoever's making that, we want to make that an agenda item also. Any questions on any of the things for consideration? Greg, I don't know if you want to talk on anything, but I think it's pretty cut and dry on what you want. It's very simple. Kurt, no issues with anything? So, that's item number.
Five.
Five.
Hold it.
It's a seven.
Billy?
Seven motion?
I'm sorry, what were we asking?
Seven's for Canal's End, that they want to take one space divided into two.
And that's commercial, right?
That's item seven, yeah.
Yes.
It's a commercial.
All right. Anybody have any questions on anything? Anybody in the public want to speak on anything? Susan?
Just follow up by just five questions we forgot to ask. Susan Rockman. Do we need, and if something official from the borough is saying our permit was approved for First Fridays, so what, do you just do that for us or what do we do?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry.
It's approved, right?
Exactly. You don't need. Anything in writing or anything like that?
Council authorized closing the street.
We're authorizing you to proceed.
Okay. Is there a way we could get contact information for the fire police so we can talk to them before the event?
Everything's going to go through Merle and our fire chief.
Okay, so talk to them. And we have to close the road. I understand the borough contacts Penn Dot for us to do that? Is that right?
That's correct.
It'll be just like a regular First Friday, not a campaign.
So, we, do we contact Septon and everything to let them know?
I guess we asked you to shut the question.
Call that, Merle.
My call, Septon.
You do?
Okay.
I think if you could limit the setup time, my, I hear complaints from like Dr. Manarino's office, you know, they see hundreds of patients that one or two o'clock in the afternoon, the street's closed and the event don't start until 5:00. What times it usually close?
Three, just when it closes. Three, because the event's at 5:00, yeah. We usually close the road at 3:00, except for the vendors coming in. But we have arranged this year to have the River Runner, very fortunately, Raising the Bar has offered the River Runner to us, to any business that wants to stay open like a doctor's office. If they tell their patients to park in the main lot, the River Runner will bring them up and take them back from their business. They can advertise that to their customers ahead of time. Then they don't have to worry about parking and getting down the street.
All right. All right. Is that it?
Yep.
All right, number three on the agenda.
Mr., oh, sorry. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept council meeting minutes for June 14th, 2021, to accept the treasurer's report for May 2021, to accept the fire chief's report for June 2021, to accept the inspection department report for June 2021, to accept the police chief's report for June 2021, to accept the public works report for June 2021, and to accept Harvard report for June 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of an advertisement for the amendment of section 15-502 of the Borough Code of Ordinances to change the hours of the parking meter. Presently, the hours are 9:00 to 6:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, not on holidays and Sundays, to 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Monday through Sunday.
Monday through Sunday.
Correct. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the advertisement for the amendment of section 2-602 of the Borough Code of Ordinances to prohibit the feeding of feral cats.
Second by Mr. Catroci. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize amending the council land development approval for Nova Canor Plan of October 14th, 2013. Item eight, to allow LED lights for the approved historic street lights.
Second by Ms. Cullen. Questions or comments?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve waiver of land development subdivision plan for Canal's End, limited partnership for tax parcel 04-018-201-201-00D. Bristol Borough, Bucks County, to subdivide the parcel into two units. Unit 201D, as in David, and unit 201E, as in Edward, subject to the conditions set forth in the resolution attached.
All those in.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have to oppose since I have property? Do I have to object since I have property or it don't matter to me? Since I own the property? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize an agreement between Portnoy Law Associates, LCD, and Bristol Borough for the collection of delinquent municipal claims on behalf of Bristol Borough.
Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of ordinance approving collection procedures, appointment of solicitor, interest assessment, credit card and debit card charges and fees and costs to be added to the amount collected as a part of the unpaid municipal claims for delinquent accounts.
Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anything on our other business?
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
Yes, the.
Oh, okay. Authorizes the sale of the used vehicles. The amount of $4,091 to Scott Menzel, M-E-N-Z-E-L, and it's the 2006 Ford F-350, based on the municipal bids received.
So, Louie?
Go ahead.
I made the motion, Louie, second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. And then also authorize the advertisement of an ordinance to change the state fire relief payments from five fire companies to four fire companies.
Second by Mr. Pezzetta. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Need a motion for our soccer program.
Oh, soccer, okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a soccer program and to hire Mike Plabloski to run it with a stipend being discussed next month.
Just so we can get the advertisements moving along. Do I have a second? By Ms. Cullen. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anything else?[1783.13]